But I wish they would.
They ain't.
Okay, I got seven o'clock. Ready?
I'm ready.
Ready? Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It is Monday, October 24th at 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Will you join me for the Bledgelygents, please?
Bledgelygents. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Denison.
Here.
Weeden.
Here.
Downey.
Here.
Money.
Present.
Swem.
Here.
You're with Warren.
Thank you. I would accept a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm going to approve the amended agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is Money. I'll support.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Denison.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
Downey.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swem.
Yes.
Gary.
Thank you. At this time, I would welcome public comments on agenda items only. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium and state your name for the minutes. Go on once, go in twice. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Someone like to make a motion?
This is Money. I'd move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Weeden.
Yes.
Downey.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swem.
Yes.
Denison.
Yes.
Gary.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to schedule matters from the floor. New DPW Building Construction Project Update. I believe Mr. Gary Barton and Dan from ABB are here.
Good evening, guys.
Good evening.
Daniel Burns, Project Manager for ABB, Construction Manager. Gary's there, too, owner's rep. So we overlooked about three weeks ago, we got updated drawings from Bergman Group, the design development, which is kind of your middle phase through pre-construction. So we took their drawings, we did our estimate, we looked at the numbers, that new help from subcontractors, trying to get an updated number in front of you guys, just kind of as a progress update, not really looking for direction or approval from anything. We're just merely informing you guys of where we're at now and kind of the next steps in the process. So if you look at the estimate summary, should be in your agenda from Heather as of today. Back in, I think it was late March, we had, I was up here with Amelia, we presented a number. We got down to just about 4.4 million per construction costs. As it sits today, big picture, we're about 4.53. A portion of that is related to kind of inflation-related costs. Give you a couple of examples where, you know, it seems insulation, for example, has, seems to be three to 5% every month. It keeps going up. Light fixture costs are up 30% in the last three months. So it's, things like that just continue to grow and that's, that's a portion of what we have going on here. There is a couple of scope creep items that we've kind of narrowed down with Bergman. We got that stuff taken care of. So in addition to that, we also kind of added here on the summary, your FF and E budget from the Barton Group, that they worked with Mike and Heather on to nail down there. And then also the total bond costs, which are related to bigger tellus costs, getting the bond prepared for you guys. So all in all, you're looking at a total project cost. So that's your, your hard construction cost plus your soft costs, just under 4.9 million. So that gets you the footprint as designed from Bergman, pretty utilitarian building. And kind of what's been desired and what was asked for, what's drawn. So I guess with that said, I see if you guys have any questions or kind of, it was a real quick summary. So you can definitely jump in the weeds if you, if you wanted to, or we can talk about next steps from here.
I know that there were some questions the last construction meeting we had about the lighting.
Yeah, so in addition to touch on kind of MEP as a whole here, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, we did get some help from area subcontractors, kind of in the Kelmazie area where we're used to working. Mike was kind enough to send us some contacts or some more local contractors that will be starting to reach out to see, kind of gain their interests, put it in front of them, make sure they know what's coming and see, maybe they want to help us some budget numbers as well. So that's kind of one of our next steps for us to see what kind of local engagement we can get for you guys on this project. With that being said, one of the questions we're going to talk about is the light fixtures in the vehicle storage, for example, what Bergman's drawn. It does seem like to be a lot as far as quantity of fixtures. We've got to look at what that does for, you know, the lumen levels and, you know, just making sure that Mike and his team have enough lighting in there. But that'll be the conversations between us and Bergman engineers and eventual electrical subcontractors.
Do you guys have any questions?
We forward that information out later tonight or?
It was in, actually, it was in one of the emails she sent this afternoon.
Oh.
I didn't, I honestly, I didn't even see it either.
I didn't see it.
I just received it this afternoon.
Yeah, that's what he said, yeah.
Our next steps are Bergman's continuing to work on getting to the construction document phase. So early November, we'll get a, sit down for a page turn where we sit down with the city, Mike, Bergman and Barton Group, go through the pages, make sure everything that we've talked about in all these meetings is making its way to the drawings so that we also have an understanding of it. So when we update our estimates, we're catching everything. We'll go through that phase, like a night, get another update for you guys, about 90% CDs. So just before we get ready to bid, get in front of you guys again, give you a quick update. And then, big picture, we're looking to get final documents from Bergman, January 5th, so that we can go for, go out for bids at that point. And that'll be about a four-week process. And then, once we get bids in, we go through post-bid interviews, make all the clarifications we need, make sure everything's picked up. And then we get the final numbers in front of you for our G and P contractor, for your guaranteed maximum. Those are our next steps. Any questions on next steps?
Well, I'm just curious. I was wondering, in a general sense, kind of the strangeness of the construction world. Are things getting better, are things getting worse, or do you see anything that could be problematic?
It's not as bad as it was. It's not good, but it's not as bad as it was. Things do seem to be slowing down. Lead times are starting to make their way back down. For example, your pre-engineer metal building, when we originally talked, was like 32 weeks. A few months ago, it's at 26 weeks and right now, it's about 22, 24 weeks. So that's slowly coming back down. Steel prices were a big thing early spring and those have definitely slowed down, too. We don't see that very, those prices jump very often. Electrical items are the biggest thing right now. So main switch gears and generators, those, those carry upwards of a year lead time. So when we go get closer to CDs and we start seeing some specs from Bergman, we'll get in front of some subcontractors just to verify lead times to say, okay, we know that this one's going to be concerned. So maybe that's something we want to jump on sooner rather than later, maybe order sooner so that it's here in time when we need it to get installed, so.
Any questions?
Gary, you have anything to add?
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports by departments, committees and boards, community development report by Mr. Rich Murphy.
Thanks, Mayor, Commissioners, everybody. Rich Murphy, Community Development Director. Just wanted to take a couple of minutes to update you on a very cool experience that City Manager Grace and I had last week when we attended the Michigan Municipal League Conference in Muskegon, Michigan. This was a, kind of a special year for Buchanan because we had a personal, personal connection with the league. You might remember, they came down here over the summer and we had a chance to tour Buchanan with the Senior Director of Communications, Selma Tucker. She actually grew up in Buchanan, as well as the foundation arm of the Municipal League, Helen McDonald. We showed them a vision for Buchanan. We talked about the stuff we were doing downtown. We showed them our vision for the north side and we took them to the river, literally on the river. Jerry Flanner took us almost all the way to Lake Chapin on his, on team boat and really got us, I think, a strong impression of the opportunities to leverage natural resources in Buchanan. So they went back and they said, well, we hope to see you in Muskegon. We said, well, we'll be there. And they actually invited us to take part in a video. I was there and up there in Lansing a few weeks ago. I think members from 10 communities were interviewed for the opening of the convention. So there's like 3,000 people on the floor and Buchanan kind of has a special featured spotlight. And we talked about where we, what our vision is, where we see ourselves in 10 years and what we're doing to get there. So it was exciting. And just a little bit about the league itself. It's a, it's a group of about 10,000 people, a lot of elected officials. So there are a lot of mayors and council members, commissioners, city staff. Our counterparts were there from places all across Michigan, big, big cities, small towns, townships. There's also a plethora of consultants and lobbyists and this, this organization has been around since before the automobile. So it really has ridden a lot of Michigan's economic trajectory. And I really think it's just a, a great resource and really laboratory of best practices for a city and, and town in Michigan. And so we went up there, did two and a half day conference. And one thing I wanted to point out is their, their tagline is, "We love where you live." And I'll come back to why that's important. But it really has to do with, this really comes from the governor down to the league, to, to pretty much anybody that's doing anything in Michigan or around the country. Place making is everything. Place, place making is economic policy. And it's not up for debate anymore. It just is. And the reason is because people are changing the decisions they're making about where they want to live. They're making that first and then they're making the decision about where, what they want to do. And now they're even making other decisions that I'll get to, which I think are really interesting. So Muskegon kind of has a story of their own. It's a manufacturing town that is on the water. You know, this kind of tells a story of, you know, we got, getting out of Buchanan is good for us to see what other communities are doing. Well, just to walk the streets and see, you know, what they're doing on their street scape, what kind of redevelopment projects they're doing. This is an old theater that they actually had the opening night recession, reception. And, you know, they have a waterfront that's come back. And they, they started this vision probably 12, 15 years ago. And it's exciting to see what they've, they've done. One interesting photo to the right there is Brunswick Bowling is there. And they, they actually made a name for themselves there when they manufactured the first pin setting machine. So it's a good Michigan bowling town, Muskegon, you know. So a lot of interesting history. So, you know, this, this is just the opportunity for City Manager and I to go there, I think, sharpen the axe, be inspired. We saw Community Excellence Awards. We were a nominee, you might remember, for a vision for Buchanan in 2001. There's networking opportunities, calibrating, and kind of see where we are. So there's, there's a general, large general sessions and then there's breakout sessions throughout the two and a half days. And I'll go into a little bit more detail on that. But our, our strategy was really Heather and I divide and conquer. So I know Heather attended a breakout session on infrastructure, federal funding. I attended a, a session on legislative updates and housing opportunities. In the evenings, there was more networking opportunities where we got to meet kind of people with their hands on the pulse of where the funding is and how to get it on the federal and state level. Kind of the funding, we met some of the funding gurus and it was just a very, I think, inspiring couple of days. So the main takeaway, and actually, the first entire day of the conference was focused on, do you have a vision? And that was the main first message. And if you don't have a vision, get one. And if you do have a vision, get people behind it and start implementing it now. You know, start now, start small, graduate to bigger things. So I think it's, it's, you know, sometimes you go to these things and you learn and you network, but you also get reaffirmed that you're on the right track. And I feel like we, in a big way, have reaffirmed that with the Vision Project, we're on the right track of doing what's more, what's working downtown and more of it, concentrating on perhaps our most vulnerable and historically neglected area, the north side, and trying to make important connections to our natural resources. And, and really, the, the reason for that is because people are making decisions on where they live first. Young people are making decisions on where they live by the quality of life and by the natural resources that are nearby and by the arts and culture and the family experiences they can have. And it, this is, again, embedded at every level of economic policy in the state of Michigan, which was just, I think, eye-opening and built some confidence that we're on, on the right track. So this is the, be the place people want to be. That's, that's what we're trying to do. How can we get young people to move back here? How can we get people that have gone to be educated to come back and buy a house? To walk their kids through the neighborhoods to the schools, to open a business, to come down to the common, to hear the concert series and, and participate in, in what it is to be a community. So this is really, again, reaffirming that we're on the right track. We're a great American small town trying to come back and, and grow a little bit. And, and by all accounts, we're doing the right strategy and action to do that. There was a lot of discussion about public art. "It's not nice to have," I think was one of the quotes. "It's economic policy." It's an expectation of a downtown. And I know that we've, we've kind of dabbled our toe in the water on some public art projects. I think they've been well-received. And it's something that we should keep going down the road on. And I think that, you know, we have the community behind us on, on this vision, on these ideas, on these best practices. So let's do it. I think that was the message that we received. There was this one really cool guy that he's from, you can tell he's just a Detroit-er. His name is John Sankovic and he developed this company called Spin City. It's kind of a music, I think it was a label at one point, and he's a music critic. But he went so far as to say that young people are now choosing where they live based on the music scene in a place. And so it just, and basically, his direct recommendation, he stood up there and he's like, "If you don't have a concert series, go get one, right now. Go get one. And if you have one, build on it." And he, you know, he talked about how it's not easy, you start small, you build on it. But this is what the economic decisions people are making are based on the quality of life. Things like arts and culture, things like natural resources. So again, you know, he talked about Austin and Nashville being making their, hanging their hats on the music mecca and really talking about Michigan, the state of Michigan with our rich Motown history and so many great artists. You know, brought up a lot of cool up-and-coming artists, I think, The Accidental was one and Billy Strings and, but also referenced a lot of the Motown and Bob Seeger and just how Michigan really can make a name for itself and become a music mecca. And really inspiring, and all the good work that we're, cities doing to partner with Michigan Gateway for these concert series, bringing in these high-quality acts that get families and people and visitors downtown, again, on the right track. So. So just a couple quotes that stayed with me over the, the conference. "To do great things, there will always be a leap of faith. We need to do things that sometimes are scary and exciting." And I, you know, I mean, that's doing things that are new. And so I think that there, there's some wisdom in that quote and something that I want, that inspired me. And the next one was about change. Change can be difficult. Historically, we faced the naysayers. Sometimes you don't like it the way it is and don't want change. So then what do you do, you know? So there's really this new philosophy called the yaysayers. Embrace change that makes sense to create a better future for all. And I think that, that if you look at all these cities and towns that we spent two and a half days with, again, this isn't like debate, they're doing it. And if you want to be with them, you got to do, you got to do these things and you got to grow and you got to show progress. So I think that all in all, I think it was an inspiring couple of days. Coming back to know that, you know, we've, we've made important connections, we have a vision, we're on the right track. We need a little bit of time and, and foot on the gas pedal, resolve. And I think Buchanan is, is pointed in the right direction, so. With that, I just open up to any questions anybody may have or Heather has any points she wants to add to or?
Yeah, I do have some, but I'm probably going to save them and do them during my city.
Okay.
May I add your comments? Thank you, though.
Great. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have any unfinished business. We're moving down to new business. Someone like to make a motion to enter closed session?
If we want, I did tell Matt, because our agenda had been shortened to come around 7:30. Is he here? I bet I'm not seeing. I don't think he's here yet. So actually, maybe I will give my MML update now, if that's okay with the commission. So I want to first give a congratulations to our partner in our region, Village of Cassopolis. Actually, won the Community Excellence Award this year for their vision of Cassopolis that they have implemented. And it really was spectacular. They did a fabulous job, very similar to what we did for the Vision for Buchanan. They brought folks together. They had basically the different strategization workshops that we did. They had the various working groups that came together and gave diverse comments and ideas. They did some really cool boards where everyone signed and dated and they carried those forward. And every time they would do an implementation, they'd bring those back. And they really transformed a section of their downtown with very little budget. They're a very small village. So for them to have made such a transformation, I thought was quite admirable. And I was very proud to see someone from our region make such a big splash at the convention. So congrats to Cassopolis. Also, I think there were a lot of really high points to Rich's message earlier. There was a lot of emphasis on infrastructure. I've mentioned at previous meetings, I'm currently involved in the Michigan Infrastructure Council, those asset management trainings. There was a breakaway session I attended on infrastructure. There's a lot going on with that. Because of my attendance at that and the other program that I'm in for the Asset Management Champions and some nominations by my peer group, tomorrow and Thursday, I'll actually be in Lansing as one of 50 representatives across the state of Michigan out of the 1,700 municipalities to give comment on Michigan's 30-year infrastructure planning, both for the water and transportation groups. So Buchanan's going to have a chance to get our, you know, our imprint on policy that, that may impact the residents of Michigan for the next 30 years. So I encourage anyone who has comments related either to transportation or water, please email those to me as soon as possible. I have my water infrastructure meeting tomorrow morning in Lansing, so those sooner rather than later. Transportation, I have that one 10:00 AM on Thursday. So really want to encourage folks who have points related to that to reach out to me so I can carry forth those comments, including citizens. I want to make sure your voice is heard. Those 30 infrastructure, 30-year infrastructure planning meetings are attended by some very important officials throughout the state. And so they, they are going to take heed of what we say and, and try to really investigate the points and questions we raise. So I think it's a great opportunity for us.
Great. Who leads that?
It's actually a joint effort and it's a newly created commission, the Michigan Infrastructure Council. It was created, I think it was created under Rick Snyder, if I'm not mistaken, and embraced by Governor Whitmer and now is carrying forward. And they are bringing together various agencies in the state. So MDOT is a part of it, Eagle's a part of it.
Did they talk much about the SRF funding bill that they passed or anything on that?
No, not, not extensively. I did attend a breakaway session that was dedicated to ARPA funding. That was very beneficial. We do have a connection now where we are going to be receiving some free consultation from a group out of Oregon that was the national liaison that the MML flew in. I spoke with her after, made a really good connection. She's going to give us some free consulting work on getting as much ARPA funding as we can.
Great. Well, you want me to peek out in the parking lot and see if Matt is out there?
I told him to try to come at 7:30, so he should be any minute. Yeah, if you don't mind, looks like Tim's going to have to take a peek.
Waiting on the attorney.
No, I can talk a little more about MML. Another of the breakaway sessions I attended was on civility in government and having good meetings with public officials and the members of the public. Not yet? Okay. So another wonderful presenter, her name was Marilyn and she's a consultant. She was previously in municipal management for her entire career and upon retirement decided to open this firm, just seeing the general state of civility in government going down recently, which I think everyone on any side of the aisle could agree is an unfortunate thing that's been occurring as a trend of late. So she's started this advocacy group where she's trying to change that trajectory and she's offering consultation services geared towards bringing back civility towards the public comment section of meetings, as well as making sure that staff and leaders are working together in a collaborative way and that the voice of the public's getting heard. So one of hers is-
Where does she deliver her message? I'm curious. Like, does she deliver that to municipalities or does she show up at meetings so that the public can hear that?
She, she does both. She does, pretty much depends, she'll come in and talk with the community, the leaders and members from the public, try to gauge what that particular locality's problems are and see where she can design a specific way to try to bring all sides together in a more civil way, to just to make the quality of conversations more proactive and productive rather than degenerative. So I found her very helpful. She had a lot of breakout sessions within the class where we would partner with people we were sitting next to. And she recommended that we create a advocacy group of our own peers. And so I actually did do that and we have three other municipalities that we're now, now going to be partnering with, at least, you know, myself and the individuals who are present, to try to keep each other on track with implementing some of the suggestions that she made in her presentation. And from speaking with her, she said, "I think we were the only group that actually did what she said." So she was very happy to see that. So, and it was actually a wonderful group and I'm excited to continue that advocacy work with them. Another thing Muskegon did that I thought was quite unique, they had a section of their town, I don't know if the building had been burned or was just razed because it was, you know, dilapidated or obsolete, but, but an empty lot that they weren't ready to construct something on. So they brought in a bunch of sand, I don't know if they just brought it from their beach or where, and made it a beach-like environment right in the middle of their downtown with hammocks and, you know.
That's where their farmer's market goes around.
Yeah.
You say that's right there with that farm?
So the building right across the street, that big one, I did that project with the MEDC.
Yeah, it was really, really unique and awesome. I thought it was great.
$12 million, $12 million project. Muskegon. Downtown Muskegon's pretty, pretty sweet now.
It was nice to see their creativity, that they were willing to try things that, you know, I've not seen another project like that in other communities, but it was really, really wonderful to see it.
They took those little like decorative sheds in their backyards and they surrounded the sand volleyball area with it and turned those into micro businesses.
So it looks like a beach town.
Yeah, it was pretty cool.
It's super cute. They look like little cottages because they're the cute sheds, yeah.
But along that, that waterway they had there where they had the LSTs and you go make-
That's a river, right? It's like the San Joe River going into-
Yeah, I can't remember the name.
Muskegon River.
But yeah, that, that's a, that's a real nice area and it's, you know, visited quite regularly. I know we, we have, the American Legion, we have a conference there, so.
Oh, okay. I mean, we do have a section of our closed session we can discuss that doesn't require the city attorneys if we wanted to. if we wanted to do that and if Tim or someone would be willing to let Matt know to come on back. That's an option. Just throwing that out there. That's totally up to the mayor how you want to proceed.
Yeah, I mean, we can go back and get started without Matt. That's fine. Someone want to make a motion to enter closed session?
I move to enter closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268, Section 8, 1H, D, and A.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Dowey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, would someone like to make a motion to re-enter open session?
Sean will make said motion.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is money. I'll support.
Can we roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Dowey?
As the governing body of the city, the commission has the responsibility to review the city manager's performance annually. And I'm proud to announce that the city manager has, for the second year in a row, attained a satisfactory performance review that entitles her to the appropriate raises laid out in her employment contract. Congratulations to Heather. Would someone like to make a motion?
This is money. I would move to submit to the public the results of the annual performance review of city manager Heather Grace, which finds that Grace has satisfactorily performed her duties as per her employment agreement.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Webb? Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Dowey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving down to communications. Do you have any?
None for this evening.
Okay, public comments? None.
Wake up, Don.
You and Norm are going to have to arm wrestle.
Norma, he moved faster than you. I mean, I, his wheels were greased and ready to go.
Those wheels have been spinning for a while.
That was circa 1975 right there. That was...
I'm Don Ryman, 313 West Front Street, Buchanan. I was glad to see that the city manager and director Murphy had attended the Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting and brought things back to us. Over the years, I've observed the city commission, the city's gotten great benefits from MML, and I'm glad we're continuing that way because they can have programs that a city of 5,000 can't have, can't afford. So I've enjoyed that. Right.
Thank you.
Oh, there we go.
Jeff Griffin, 314 Miller Street. I like to give you a different address each time. All I want to say is thanks to Cameron, Sean, Mark. I don't know what's going to turn up in the next couple of weeks, but I appreciate your time, as I do the other gentlemen that are going to be around. But thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate that. Anyone else?
Norma Ferris, 304 North Oak. I know we got our mileage. Dial away. I know that Niles is happy. I just have not seen a contract. It is October. You only have one week, and it will be November, and we don't have a contract. Niles hasn't seen one either. It's not COVID's fault. You got to work at home. I'd like to see one before November.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Okay. Saying none, moving down to executive comments. City manager comments?
So touching on what was said before, I acknowledge that some of you may not be in your, you know, seats the next time we convene. And for any who are not, I want to sincerely thank you for your service to the citizens of Buchanan and those who do return. I'm extremely excited for what we can accomplish together, and I thank you all for continuing on this journey with us. Thank you also to the members of the public. We have some stalwarts who can always be counted on to stick around even though there's a closed session that shows extreme dedication and commitment to the wanting the best interests of your community. And I applaud you all for your dedication. So thank you for that as well. It was very enjoyable and very rewarding and inspiring going to the Michigan Municipal League. It brought me some renewed vigor for ideas that I want to implement, and I'm really excited for what we can do. So that's, I already sort of went over the exhaustive points of the MML, so I won't go back over that, but thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Money?
Well, I want to start by saying congratulations to Heather for the job well done.
Thank you.
And I also want to say, because I've said this time and time again over the two years that I've been here, this has been a learning and growing experience for me. But I've always thrown the accolades out there to everybody that serves on this commission. And I want to say in particular, thank you to Mark, Sean, and Cameron for all the work that they've done, you know. As was stated, we may not see, this may not be the same commission here in a couple of weeks, but it's been truly enjoyable working with you guys and getting to know you. And it's been my privilege to sit on this board with you, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Swen?
All right. Yeah, so I'm not going to say bon voyage to you two because I'm counting on you. So I will take the time to thank Cameron on his soon-to-be retirement from the commission. Really appreciate the time we've spent, the conversations we've had. Put the city, put the city where, in a way, I don't know, I didn't write this ahead of time.
Sean probably did.
You cared, you cared a ton about the city, and I know you worked your ass off, sorry, worked your tail off to try to do what was best in the end. I just truly appreciate the time we've had together up here and look forward to working with you in other capacities in the future.
Thanks.
Commissioner Denzel?
No, I'm not going into the restaurant industry. Maybe I'll drink a beer with him.
I'd just like to thank the city of Buchanan for putting me in here for four years. I'm going to enjoy my retirement.
Commissioner Swen?
All right. Thank you to you two, I say three, including myself, for four years. I mean, four years ago, I mean, we were all doing something different, you know? You weren't in the position, you weren't in this position, you weren't here, you weren't here, you weren't here. You weren't in that position, you weren't in that position. Jeff was probably still in the same position.
Over like this, I think.
Yeah, something like that. Man, for, and I'm only saying this because maybe I don't get in, right? We hope for the votes and we do our best to represent the city as best we can. But man, we've been through some things, the three of us. We've gone on two years that were, we felt like we were walking around blind and being told what to do and how to do it and where to go and what to vote for and when to raise our hand and when to put it down, and, you know, and that's kind of how the city ran. It just, everything was smoke and mirrors to some degree. And I'm not saying that it was, but it sure wasn't the communication we've got today. I've seen the change in the three of us. Over the two years that we've, we're able to make changes. I think we've put safety nets in place to protect our departments. We're going to continue to do that if, by the grace of whatever you believe in, that we're back again, Sean and I. And Cameron, thank you for everything, man. I know that's, he always works hard to find the answers for things. He's a dang good researcher and does not forget very much at all. So I thank you for the time. Thank you for making me a better commissioner. I really, truly mean that. I know that we haven't always seen eye to eye. People may think that when we're up here. But we don't always, and that's a good thing. You don't want people just to agree on everything. Sean, thank you for your two years as mayor. I think that you handled it well. You took slings and arrows with the best of them. And for the other two that are still here, you guys have been exceptional and given us a different perspective on things that we definitely didn't have in the first two years, so. Yeah, thank you, everybody, for all your hard work. I appreciate it. If I'm not here again, well, maybe I'll come down and heckle from the crowd with Norma.
Well, Mark knows me well after four years because when I, when I want to make sure that I say something, I write it down because I don't do well trying to think on my feet. So I wrote my comments tonight. This evening is my last meeting serving as the mayor of Buchanan, and I wanted to use this time that I'm given for comments to thank some folks and express my sincere appreciation for you allowing me to serve and represent our community. I have no idea what the results of the upcoming election will bring or if I will be re-elected, so I want to make sure that you know how grateful I am for the opportunity that you've given me to be your mayor. Some may scoff and some may think that I'm being overly dramatic, but believe me when I say that being the mayor of Buchanan has been the honor of my lifetime. I didn't have the most extravagant upbringing. In the early 80s, I can remember doing my homework next to a coal fire by the light of an oil lamp because for a time, we didn't have electricity or running water. My father worked as an engineer for the railroad, and we moved often depending on where he was needed. And between kindergarten and fourth grade, we lived in at least nine different places, and I found it hard to make friends because we were always moving. I struggled for a long time to feel like I belonged anywhere. So I can't even begin to tell you what it means to me when I walk down the street or I'm pumping gas and someone I know drives by and honks or waves. I met my wife in college 30 years ago. When we were younger, we talked about what our future would look like. And like everyone, we always hoped we'd find a place to settle down, raise a family, somewhat jokingly hoping that one day she could be a elementary principal and that I could be involved in local politics. Fast forward 25 years, 25-plus years, and here we are, raising a family in the nicest place in America. My wife and I are blessed, and we know it. We're grateful. I'm grateful. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for allowing me this opportunity. I want to thank my wife and daughter for putting up with me for the last four years. I want to apologize for the missed dinners, dance practices, recitals, sporting events, and everything else I missed. I love you both. I want to thank my fellow commissioners for their hard work, their time spent away from their families and their dedication to our community. I also want to thank them for trusting me with the position of mayor. I want to thank Heather, Rich, Calla, Deb, Ashley, Courtney, Brittany, Jill, and Emma for choosing Buchanan as a place to work and for bringing their talents and passion to City Hall every day. The city is better because you're here. To the entire team of the DPW and Water, thank you for all you do to make our community thrive. I appreciate the sacrifices you all make to keep the city running. I'd like to thank our police department for everything they do to make our community not only safe, but welcoming. Your continued efforts to connect with our community in so many different ways is an important part of what makes this a great place to live and work. Sorry. I want to thank all the volunteers who serve the city. The list is too long to name everybody, but they serve on our various boards. They donate an enormous amount of their time, and they're what makes life better here. Finally, I want to thank the citizens of Buchanan, and I also want to challenge you. I want to challenge you to do your part, to be good citizens, to be active in your neighborhoods, and to be informed on current events in the city. You are a part of this team also. Your participation is vital to our success. If you can't serve on a board, if you can't attend meetings regularly, at the very least, do your part by treating our city employees with the respect they deserve. If I've learned anything over the last four years, it's that the people who work in this building have a thankless job. If you can treat them with kindness and respect, you'll be helping the city by making their work environment a more pleasing place to be, and that will hopefully help reduce turnover and help keep good employees. I can assure you, they're working for you, not against you. I can't say I've enjoyed every second of the last four years, but I can state without a doubt that I've learned a great deal and I've made friendships that I will always cherish. And I hope to see all of you right back here very soon. Thank you. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Hopefully not for the last time, Larry. I'll make said motion.
Then I'll support.
Yes.
That's only one. No, it's a new count.
All in favor, say aye.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right.
See you, Cam.
See you later, buddy.